All right, I'd like to call and order this regular monthly meeting of the Village Trustee Board of Trustees, August 13th, 2018. All board members are present. Clark is on vacation and is excused. I have a couple of changes to the agenda. We're going to table item 6D-3, the Drafted External Communications Policy. The gentleman from Linebike is scheduled to change again, so he will be here at 7:30, so I'll let him give the stats instead of me reading his email. So we'll try to sneak him in at 7:30 before the board reports. Any other changes from the board? Hearing none, we do not have minutes to approve from last month's meeting. They're still in draft form, so we'll get those out at the next month's meeting to approve. Which takes us to item number four, which is our first public comment period. If anyone from the public would like to say anything, now is the time. Fifteen minutes set aside. We will pull behind. Going twice. All right, another public comment. End of the meeting. If anybody comes up with anything they want to pop out of the meeting.
I need to find my passport. Card.
I have it. All right, item number five on the agenda is reports from representatives. I see Nancy City right there.
Yes, thank you. Actually, one of the things I was sharing with Chris from Progressive Times is that the town of Ulysses now has, our zoning update committee has completed its drafts. They have transmitted them to the town board. But we are now in an opening, somewhat extensive process to go share that information and receive feedback before we take any action. So probably, I think, at least eight or ten of the sections of the zoning that have been, which updates have been recommended. And there are a series of public open houses at the town hall. The first of which is coming up on August 20th, 10:01. Well, I'll do is actually forward this email to you. It's really been in the town update that Chris has sent, but I just pulled out of this because I also had to look into where the documents are, if they're not available or close. So we invite people, and obviously, even though the town is responsible for doing its zoning independently for the town outside of the village, and none of the zoning that we're currently planning should directly affect the village, which we have your own zoning, I'd still invite people from the village who are choosing to come learn about it and to probably know, friends, the understanding that they need in the outside. So, happy to share that. We have a bunch of things coming up on our meeting that's scheduled for tomorrow night. And I took a, pardon me, but I'm going to actually look at mine, or get to, to read it, to remind you what's going on. And we've got, since the town here, the town is beginning to get ready to begin the process because of the calendar year. And so that means in the summertime, we're sort of looking at what our year-end projections might be, looking at, looking at the latest tax assessments, to see what the value of our properties are, and then beginning the process of building a budget. And in anticipation of that, we are actually going to early adopt the tax cap override protocol. We're looking at that just for that. And we have had some fairly ancient parking regulations that were very vague and unclear that had been created. If you park a car or vehicle on a town road, how, at what point does it become a danger for your emergency or zoning of vehicles? And, you know, what point, like, our highway department would be authorized to, to go? And that came in issue, that came to our attention about a year ago, a couple years ago, in flight down a trail, and people were very anxious to take advantage of it, and a large section of the trail passes through the town. And there really aren't that many sort of planned pull cutouts where people can park. And so people are sort of like wedging themselves on the side of the road, maybe getting on the trail, and then come back and we have some pretending, just thinking that we should be disowing all those cars, even though it wasn't stolen, concealed or whatever. So we said, let's take a look. And so we've got updated parking regulation and parking law that we're taking a look at. And, I'm backing out about a bunch of time line. And apparently, we've got to hear a report, a video request from Rotary, that is probably elderly, looking around a tree product, so we're going to hear more about that. So I think the basis is that our new planner, John Zepko, has started, Z-E-P-K-O, and he has tremendous amount of experience in the world that we used to have. He's jumped right in. He has been a planner in our town, in Saratoga County, he's been a planner in county of Old Kewa. He has, he understands, and after those trainings, something I can do. So he has, he just started in July, and has already been working on a plan, or as I play, news and that kind of thing. So please, and he'll be along with our planning, so he'll be at the open house, he's zoning on his, as well. And actually, has suggested this format, because he's seen it go well in one of his open meetings. So that, that's been, no, I don't think this can go in the newspaper quite yet. Got it. We actually, we got word today that we, the town of Ulysses, has hit enough of the milestones in the Climate Smart Communities Program that the state has organized a purge for environmental efficiency, that we are now, have achieved the bronze status. So, but, can't tell anyone, because the state office is still planning an official announcement. But I know that those are, you know, that that is an area that we're interested in, so it is possible that I practice. But I couldn't decipher from the email is exactly what, there are some incentives and benefits that relate to that. And I'm not quite sure what this next level gets us. The first level that we have achieved got us a brand that we use, that we're actually using now to plan and upgrade our heating and cooling system in the town hall, to make that work properly and more efficient, and related to systems. So, so there are some incentives for doing a part of, like, the community department. So that, how it impressed today. So those probably, I mean, a few other questions that we will leave the commission this week at, or we'll get, to keep sort of moving the question of sort of our, how we maximize our resources and access, and where's the program. Okay, one last second. I mean, I, I think completely for the town's using data, both from Brian Snyder and FedEx, a little profile comparison, actually, this year, about, there are numbers of calls that the town has taken for the village, and it's come through the DMS. And I've had, I shared that with a town board member, it's, it's a quick little spreadsheet, but if anybody was interested, I'm sure I can share it with you.
I'd be interested.
Yes, so, we're dealing a little bit of apples and apple, better apples and oranges on some of their data, and sort of, just sort of track what we use and what. All right. Yeah, it goes.
You were live, that's why.
Yes, we're, we're sharing the screen.
Yes. Figure our lives should be followed. All right, we will. Joe, what did you think?
Five minutes or so.
So we're going to move along to board reports. We'll interrupt. Jeff from Linebike shows up. I think, because Joe is here, we'll move the police up. Keep me doing the honors while Joe is actually here. Let's keep everyone. Pete, take your.
Well, I'd like to, I think everyone had a chance to meet Joe. I've had a pleasure of meeting with Joe several times over the last few weeks. About this interview process for our new chief. Very confident, we actually, new chief. It's always good to sign when people from outside your community step up and say, you know, you're, you're quite honored to consider this guy for your disposition. So Joe has a great reputation all over the region, and really impressed with his commitment to community policing. So a lot of the programs he's been involved with over a great time at state police. And so I'd like formally to move that we vote to name Joe Helsa as Chief of Police for the village of Jerusalemburg.
I'd like to say.
Friendly amendment from Joe's formal name, which shall not be, which shall not be spoken. Motion in a second, any discussion? Just say that we are going to have a ceremonial squaring in tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. here in this room. We are limited to a capacity of sixty, according to our fire chiefs, and we'll probably test that number, just in Joe's immediate family. But if, it is open to the public. It is, as I say, ceremonial in nature, so we won't be doing press conference Q and A type stuff, but if anybody wants to be here, you're certainly welcome. 10:00 a.m. Tammy's in charge of lighting the cushions. We got more.
Is he on vacation?
He isn't. He's coming in.
That's why the cushions are light. Be heavy for you.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. No further discussion, and whose own favors, an aye?
Aye.
Close, any discussions? Congratulations, sir.
I just want to say thank you, and then we'll further discuss things tomorrow. I appreciate you having me. We'll be short, but my son is at football practice, finishes shortly during high school. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
Tell them, tell them you survived the risk. Tell them you survived the tour.
All right, thanks for making the play.
All right.
Thank you.
See you in the morning.
All right. There's some good times in here. We finish the rest here. Before we jump out, so I don't need, before we... Flori, here's Jeff.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, good.
We know that my staff's here.
So just so everyone knows, we did ask Jeff from Linebike to come back at the board of this meeting. It's been not quite two full months.
About two full months.
Right before grassroots, so about six weeks before it was Porch Fest. Before Porch Fest. So we are coming up on two months. Asked Jeff to come back and just kind of give us an overview of some stats in terms of daily rides, usage, and whatnot. Jeff, it's over.
Okay. Just take one second to look this here, and give you all the up-to-date information. Okay, there you go. So, as of today, we have accumulated 1,132 rides that have started directly downtown, between our area, which we then extended a little bit to the fairgrounds, so that also includes Jerusalemburg. We have 469 individual users, so that's pretty good amount, given the total of people that live here. The rate's pretty high. We traveled 1,248 miles across the village. And our average trip is just under half mile, 0.4, and the median time that people are riding bikes is twelve, or twelve minutes, which is across the board for us, a half-mile trip and a twelve-minute ride time, or right in line, company by, with all of our other areas that we work in. Jerusalemburg is one, if not the most rural small town that we, that we have in all of our ranks, or up to about eighty-four cities, that's, that's, that's it. And so it's been very interesting to see how, how it's gone here. For me, obviously, grassroots was our, was our high in terms of daily rides. On the Saturday of grassroots, we had about 175 rides in a day, which basically just from around town, or shopping, or getting food in the gas station, back to fairgrounds and back and forth. And many of those rides, more than half of them, are after midnight. So if people were leaving the festival at night, looking for a way to get home, or get back to the park, it's a challenge. I know this was the first year that they did the sort of cross-the-way parking situation, so that was kind of new and different for everybody. We put a lot of bikes, but we were there to start. Not a lot of those bikes actually needed to the fairgrounds. The path from there to the front entrance of the fairgrounds is a little bit odd, it's through woods, and it's kind of a weird path, but wasn't ideal for biking, so that wasn't the best way. But almost every bike that we were able to get to, the front of the fairgrounds was used and taken from there as the main started port. Ninety percent of the rides all started from the main entrance. There was only about maybe fifteen or twenty bikes total for the whole weekend that actually needed inside. They had told me originally, when we were thinking about how to do it, that no bikes were allowed outside at all. Obviously, that was there for most of it, that's not, that wasn't the case. Plenty of bikes in there in general, and about twenty or so bike bikes here and there. Anytime that we came across bikes, me, I would get me and myself and my staff that were in the fairgrounds, we pulled them out, we brought them back to the park. It looked like we had somebody else to take them off. There were a few other rides that started at the back entrance, that went down rather run, and to, to get a false park as well. On average, so the average is a little bit skewed, because obviously, we had those four days in a row where we had about 150, 160 average. We did about eighteen day of, Porch Fest, the first, very first day we started it. But on average, our, our weekly average is generally pretty low. Some days, we see a few, us four trips in general. After grassroots, we reduced the total number of bikes downtown. I think we started forty originally. To grassroots, we brought another forty. And now downtown, on a daily basis, this morning, I think at twenty-three, or twenty possibly above lines. But we're seeing on a good day, you know, we'll see twelve trips or fourteen trips, and on a slow day, we see four trips or six trips. A few of them, two or three of them, are basically safe every single day. We see at the same exact time, somebody's getting off work, or buying, we see a bike getting on bike, buying over every day. A few have made it out up the hill, heading up towards like all the states up there in that direction. Maybe people started some there that made their way back to town. For the most part, the starting places are all right here, not right here, but right there, on, you can see on the chart, I'm going to shoot there. And as far as other information that I have to share, I'll tell you right now, today we have, maybe we have twenty-one bikes that are on the map today. Not that there haven't been any complaints, but it's for the most part, complaints that have actually made it through the customer service project, that have come to my attention and needed immediate, you know, sort of dispatch immediately. There's literally been one of those the entire time. A few grassroots related things, you know, were a little irregular, but on a daily basis, everything has been able to be solved by either just our regular staff who's here in town, who's dealing with on a daily basis, or giving feedback locally and keeping care of it that way, which is excellent, that a lot hasn't gone for customer service. A lot of other cities that were in, daily, there's, you know, sometimes dozens of calls that go through customer service, and have to get dispatched to a manager, and then a team has to be sent out to do whatever it is they need to do in that case. But generally, in general, it's been very well received, and I'm not sure exactly what winter plan will be. Obviously, on, on slow days, we're seeing, you know, six or four rides, and so probably that's not going to be, you know, getting much busier as we get to, as we get to the winter. We're a week away from, you know, the students all coming back to town again. I'm not sure if that's going to have any effect on riders here. We'll certainly, we'll, we'll take a look and see what that is. So hopefully, it will, you know, at least be steady. I may have to fit at the, what's it called? The tune per fare. Yeah, so I imagine that those will be, that weekend will also be busier than average weekend as well. And we'll do, bring some bikes up to the fairgrounds to start up there as well. Hopefully, people will be right back and forth to town. I was parking on South Street and riding to the fairgrounds for the whole weekend. Like, that was great, it was super comfortable to park, didn't have to deal with all the, you know, cars and traffic, or the $20 parking or any of that. And it's, you know, five minutes riding in, so that actually was very effective in terms of getting back and forth.
Do you have any other questions, or any questions, challenges, now that I can take out from the basement? Moving forward. Twenty-one bikes is sort of where you are now, is that, do you feel like that's a subtle number, or is that, like, the impression I got is sort of, it's always influx?
Yeah, we, like I said, we're collecting data every day. So if all of a sudden, we start seeing twenty-one rides today, starting tomorrow, then we'll be more, you know, we can bring more bikes out to address that. If it continues to be four, six rides today, then I'm not going to be too crazy about twenty-one turns into fifteen, and people being like, if they're running on the trail and they're going back or...
So it may go down somewhat if riders, if that stays, stays where it is.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, there is no magic number, it's what the usage is, and we can, we can adjust that, you know, variably, and on the fly, even on a daily basis. So occasionally, we have, our bikes have been online now, going on four months. We have a few of our own maintenance issues with bikes that cause someone to go offline, but if two of them go offline, we don't pick them up. I don't feel like if we have to rush two more bikes back out here because we're going to lose rides right now.
I'm just trying to get, I do, you know, if it stays stable as far as rides per day, is twenty, that's like...
That seems like about right now. I would guess that that seems like the right now. We've got a few up there by the school. It'll be interesting to see. I know last year, in the spring and summer, when, after we had rolled out a ton of, after high school, student tour bikes, two from school. And so I'm not, I mean, school's already done when we came here, so that could be, back to school when, you know, my high school students had, or use them as well. So we can see if it turns out that that's a popular thing, that people are, then maybe more bikes are, would be, you know, to serve that.
Is there like a general ratio that the company operates at, their volumes of bikes?
No, the only magic number that we have is what we call total bikes per vehicle per day, T V D. And for pedal bikes, in a truly sustainable market, for pedal bikes, it should need one. Basically, if you have twenty bikes, you should have twenty bikes a day. That's a real market that can have a lot of success. But given that this market, from an operations standpoint, is operating basically as an, as an offshoot of IFCA, IFCA's T V D averages closer to two some days, 1.5 on average, there's a little bit where we, we, we need some of the more, you know, smaller towns, which is, you know, we're sort of seeing in this, in this area how that works, and seeing if that can be applied to other suburbs and other smaller towns. Most of the other states that we are, pretty big, even IFCA is small compared to most of the other states that we're in. So this whole area is kind of like, we're just like, look at the data, hmm, this works, and this doesn't. You know, we want to figure out what the best solution is, ultimately. We released our company's one-year report, and one of the most important pieces of data that came out of that was that 25% of all of our rides, of the seven company rides, company ride, are either to or from mass transit. And so that's sort of like a complete group of concept of what the big, one of the biggest gaps, transportation gaps, that most cities have, that people get on, so a bus, where the bus left them on, isn't necessarily where they need to go. And so that's one of the biggest areas that we're, certainly.
You got a question?
Is there motorized versions for you to consider?
Yeah.
And is there an adult tricycle option?
Okay, so motorized versions, we have e-bikes and we have electric scooters in our fleet that we have in many other cities. Currently, the way that New York State's law is written, neither one of those vehicles is technically, we don't violate the definition of the law. We would love to change that, and if we can do that, we certainly would be adding, at the very least, electric bikes to our fleet right away, potentially, as we move forward in some of, in some of the, you know, New York State, some of the electric scooters. As far as trucks are concerned, we don't currently produce a three-wheeled vehicle. We sort of, for our long-term company plans, we sort of skipped over that, and we're thinking more about four-wheel, sort of electric pod, you know, car thing for, for future use. That we're in very early development. They have some of those in some of the Chinese cities, where they have that in there. Basically, just little electric cars, and, you know, worth the same money, you'll dock with your phone, you get it, it has enough room for one person, you dock your phone and your map comes up on the little screen, you put your, connect your little screens, you put stuff down, and you ride, plug it in, and you get home.
Two years ago, once, you mentioned high school. It looks like your user agreement requires you to be eighteen years of age or have a parental agreement, in which case you can be sixteen years of age, at least, that's what I've read on the line, right, so is that true?
Um, no, it's sixteen as far as I know.
Sixteen?
Eighteen for the scooters.
Okay, it's out of, maybe out of your range, right? I got to go, that's my question.
In New York State, you have to be sixteen years old to have a credit card. You have to have a credit card that's open in the account, right? And so that's kind of where we keep the line on that. Obviously, there's many parents who give their credit cards to their kids, creating an account with their phone, and, you know, we haven't had any issues with that, as far as this is.
Do you have any concern about kids younger than sixteen in this case, having access to their parents' credit cards? And then if they get into an accident, they are, and they're the user of the industry because they're using their vehicles.
That's, although that would be on their parents' permission, if it's their parents' credit card, that's what they're allowed. And obviously, they stole their parents' credit cards, that's a different kind of issue. If their parents are willing to give them an account, give them access, the assumption in that chain of thought is that they would understand usually, because of the risks that they're facing.
And then, do you, I guess I tried to get through some questions to your, through your, I don't know, help desk, I guess, if they were able to answer. Are you currently hired by Linebike? Are you charging any tax, that offer this one, for use?
No.
So there's no tax?
No. Yeah, there's no tax. We still have the, the way that it was set up initially, when it first rolled out, was you could download the app, and you could basically put in a phone number, and unlock a bike, make it a free ride, without even putting in a credit card initially. You sort of do that as like an introductory, you kind of wait to get people involved. That operated for a few weeks when it started. Now, we're downloading it, unlocking a lot of bikes. Now, when we're downloading it, unlock a bike, all, you have to have a credit card, nobody. So that sort of like tightens up the security on the number of levels for us. And in many cities, in any cities that have electric vehicles, which we currently don't, the way that it works is you can't, you can no longer just put it in the credit cards and then unlock and pay as you go. You have to prepay increments of five or ten or twenty dollars. Because the electric vehicles cost a little bit more, but the one-dollar unlock is only basically for a minute in that case. And it's fifteen cents per minute for the electric vehicles. And so we require a prepaid, like little chunks of time.
Like security?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically like, you're not gonna use it for one minute. And so instead of debiting everybody's account and then trying to get it, we just have to prepaid. But that's currently not enabled in this area.
Can you tell me what T V D is?
It's, uh, it's T V D. It's total rides per vehicle per day. It's like, this, this, uh, this company, and I'm sure lots of other companies have tons of like free ride applications for stuff. When I first joined, you know, I didn't come from that kind of background where you start a company, decide, learn what they all were. And because saying, well, we're over here, and I type like, I just go like, or make sharing, is this what we need? Is this what we need? But T V D is our standard measure for that.
Jeff, I don't know if you, Mark, did you notice, you said very precisely, most of the trips originated from the fairgrounds?
Yeah.
Do you know where those trips ended?
Uh, ending places were much varied. Some of them went to the parking lot, some of them were all the way back to town. There was no like central ending spot, whereas there was obviously a central beginning spot. And I did frankly pour over that data with quite some comfort, which we served good, but generally don't have to. Down the time, deep analysis or something like that.
Yeah, I would ask, I'm generally curious if the, if the rides were fresh between the parade riders into downtown.
Yeah, I mean, certainly a number of the bikes went to downtown. I, my guess is, given the time of day, that is probably more likely people going home in the morning here than random people riding into town too much in the morning when there was a number of rides. I mean, basically, on that Friday and Saturday night, every bike that was at the front of the fairgrounds at that, when the last van finished, was worth taken, both nights. We started off both the next morning with zero bikes there, so.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, who'd be in touch about kind of maybe a quarterly report, something to...
Yeah, we have some speed and... Will certainly be interesting, like, except when the school starts here in the next couple few weeks, here at the beginning of September, we'll see if there's an uptick with ridership from kids going to school and coming back. You know, there's, there should be, and if there is, then, you know, great. And if it turns out that they're not using it at all, you know, and you get closer and closer to winter, you know, maybe a dozen bikes downtown, we all will be able to manage, you know, over the, over the cold winter, I would say.
I'm sure that would nicely form a question. Is, would generally, do you think the plan is for winter?
Our overall, sure, our overall plan for winter is that we have the, there's a lot of bikes moving around, especially weather-related. On the certain days, we know it's going to snow, potentially for a long period of time. We'll want to get all the bikes off the streets, sidewalks, from the grass areas. You know, and then when this, once everything's all cleared, then they'll get back to their original parking places. There'll be a lot of like nighttime operations, a lot of center, our guys out with the vans and pick stuff up and move stuff around and just do all that. In general, I imagine that we'll have overall less number of bikes out everywhere in the winter than we do here, especially in, you know, stretches where it's like minus twenty degrees and or snow. But even on our worst days, that we've had in Ithaca so far, four reading days, like even today, or even like we had those two days last week, that are being a whole entire day, we still saw about one hundred and sixty-five rides. And so that data consists of like a minimal amount of people that are truly aligned on bikes in the air, on buses, on other activities, use of even the rain or in bad weather. And so you can ride a bike when it's cold out, and you can put gloves on, you have a hat, like you actually get, will get warmer than you can walk. So the cold shouldn't be too bad a deterrent, but certainly ice and snow will be a little bit.
So have there been any accidents here, openly, or anything that bikes, like, into the car?
There's been an incident of a car that crashed into a parked bike. That's the only one that I've really been, been aware of, to call for an insurance company to really pay us a fight. But I think we're not looking for that, or it's, it was late at night. He swerved from a cat and, correct, this was a ball break. And cat ran across the board. He swerved and they went to a, kind of, a man or a park, so. That's the only car bike incident that I've done or, I think, this time. And in Ithaca, we're getting very close to our fifty thousandth ride, which is probably, probably the first day.
I guess I'm doing the nature of the bikes, that most riders don't wear helmets and adults are not required to wear them.
Um, yeah, I would say it's hard to know from what I've seen. Guess it's a little sort of fifty-fifty. Maybe a little bit less. It's really hard to tell, but it's certainly not required. We do still have free helmets that are available to people upon them. They just can go into the bike walk, company's office, which is in the Wink Mall. Tell them they're shooting riding bikes and they don't have a helmet, and they'll fit that and they'll be free on the day.
Does it need a separate MOU for schools or classes?
What was that?
I'm wondering if there needs to be a separate MOU for bikes to be a school property?
Um, it all depends. In many cities, there's not, there's not. But in certain cases, there are, and so a lot depends on what the expectation of the school is in terms of what they would like to see happen. But generally speaking, what we saw, I mean, I can use it for high school as a great example. You know, we're seeing last fall, I mean, last spring, we were seeing, you know, as many as twenty-five or thirty bikes riding there in the morning from walking up a ball break to downtown. Basically, the bikes were sort of there until two o'clock and then they all disappeared. So there wasn't too many issues. We went on I C, uh, I H S campus a number of times during the day. We saw bikes that kicked over that we picked up. We straightened them up if they were, you know, appeared to be messy. And so we certainly wanted to maintain our energy in that case as well. But we had no, certainly no issues, although there was that one day that a bike was in the school, riding in the hallway. But that was on a prank day. And then they did the high school senior prank. They parked one hundred and seventeen line bikes in the parking lot for their senior prank. Which was very nice. They all here, drove there between twelve fifteen and one thirty a.m. And we go over to the morning, there was no bikes downtown. We go to the map, they were all parked in the parking lot. So, but I H S never commented and they never said anything about us. You know, we'd be happy to work with them, and certainly, if communities were exposed, wants a separate agreement to, you know, to do anything, we'd certainly look at that. At the moment, there's no plan for that.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. And if you guys all have, you know, or most of you have, like, you know, direct information, if there's any other shit, ways and questions, we'd be happy to get hold of. Thank you.
All right, keep it going to you, Michelle. So our update on our safe spot program. It's really good progress in the drop-off stage. Media slides, essentially layout of the program. I'll be there. Share that we're on the, sort of, back, whatever it may be. But basically, this kind of takes you through the background of why we want to establish it. Essentially, because school communities are realizing, they want to be more aware of issues like one-way bullying, anxiety drugs, overseas sexual assault. And meanwhile, school districts and households can't really offer guidance on all of this. First, trying to tie it between where our youth are walking the streets and they may have issues. So we're trying to tap more into the consciousness of just being aware of some issues that might pop up. We want to establish safe spots in different businesses, in the village, with signage in their windows, you know, potentially let's, kids and adults even, who are feeling unsafe in their environment or in distress or whatever, or how maybe they'll see these signs and they'll know that if something they can go and get assistance. Spoken, run this up in the chamber a couple of months ago, and the last chamber meeting last week, I've more depth about it. Have some early adopters who believe in the pathless, give me coffee, good to go. And probably the library, one of the things we'll have to stress in marketing this program is that it's not a daycare service. You cannot drop children off at a safe spot and have the baristas and give me, keep an eye on them. And that's something that the library already struggles with. So people already kind of tend to think the library as a daycare center at times. They were a little squeamish to jump right into this, but they want to help, but they just want to talk more about it. Other locations, I've identified with the help of the chamber, our synergy, Truance Health, Family Medicine Conference runs. And the store community society, they have not been approached yet, but they are on their list to approach. But I think we have at least three or four storefronts that will be, that offer a wide variety of COVID times and COVID days. And the one other thing that really came out of the most recent discussion is make sure that these businesses that opt in have a sort of checklist or guidelines on how to handle someone that comes in. So many owners were a little afraid that they wouldn't be there, and then the workers have to help them on. And they may not really know how to go about it. So we're working on kind of this checklist to go through when somebody comes in. Here's what we do. Here's, you know, your contact, there's a glass of water, kind of a nice place to sit. And so I emailed the county social services to kind of see if they had any, anything on that, you know, what is an ideal. You know, we don't want workers to feel liable to administer any kind of counseling service. But we just want to make sure that the person's comfortable a few minutes until the proper authorities are able to arrive. So kind of the next steps is just to touch base with the police department and possibly the school district, just make them aware of the program. And then it's going to be pushed forward in a slide. I can see four kind of rough versions of potential logos that keep the setting a nice amount of their design for me. So it was just kind of early, looks at what our sign might look like. And so kind of the, moving forward, after meeting with T V D and C C S D, we're finalizing guidelines for the first participants, establish our final version of the sign, print the signs, get an official agreement from the participants and deliver those signs and packets and guidelines to them. And then it becomes a matter of marketing the program, make sure people are fully aware that it exists. It's easy to say inside, you know, but, you know, parents and school district are not providing everyone that this is a thing that, you know, could go and utilize. We want to make sure we're marketing it on our website, social media, affiliate list, and throughout the school campuses. After that, just probably do some data tracking to know where users solicit participant feedback and then review and how we see this working. Our date for launch, I've set at Monday, September tenth, a few days after the school year begins. So hoping to get all of the please, what would you say is tied up by that? So, yes, let's get it, make sure it's made there. Logo here is, I don't know if I know that.
Also, um, the organization in Ithaca that actually deals with runaway homeless kids might actually be a more practical resource for you in terms of, sort of, the checklist and guide. Just the family and children service, it's called, we do ours now. And they just had, they were telling someone who actually was out waiting flyers and making connections so that people with the family program and the school knew about their services, be able to make referrals and be able to, I guess, if they got, they would probably develop a period of, like, initiative and would also be a resource that we believe that they're, they're doing plumbing, that they're getting, and handling our content. So that's possible.
Yeah, I think our last meeting we discussed, there is kind of a next level of program that will include texting for help, twenty-four-seven counseling, text passing, home service counseling. That requires much stronger investment in the community, but I think that also would be a good place to start.
Yeah, and also, I mean, the two-on-one program is from a new town school, which has access, and so we have somebody to develop. But is me able to, that's also going to allow, is that counseling, there's an information for services to do, uh, local services?
And Keith, my name is John, where is, I don't know, or is it a U S system, I think, library?
Well, I think it's own carbon D three or...
So, did you, I don't know if you mentioned the library, but that might be another participating.
Yes.
If you have immunity, because it really is a focal point, especially with their kids coming out of school, growing after school.
Yeah, we were talking about, I was just saying, they were, they were just a little bit nervous of being further seen as a drop-off service for kids. So I think they want to be part of it in some capacity. They just want to make sure that they know, we know what their locations are. Definitely, they...
What, I've, no, sorry.
Our question is based on all.
Oh.
So, yeah.
Any other questions? Anything else from T I C or T E S?
Uh, so, T I C just mentioned that the whole last meeting was basically devoted to a visit from how we planned it, sustainability. And they seem very open to helping surrounding municipalities with, I think, related services. Although a lot of municipalities struggle to have their own, you know, part full-time player. As well as offering training to core members and clerks and other services like that, mapping services. So I'm going to write a summary of that meeting, be more in-depth with the focus points. So I don't want to spend all our time, you know, going to sleep. John's already nodding off, I'm not sure. So I'll, I'll add a bit more of that, but the good news is, you know, we're looking for planning consulting. They're very interested in, they're coming out with, they're looking for people to invite them to their meetings and all that stuff. So we'll be comfortable about that. Basically, the, in terms of the state charitable trust deduction for these penalties, I think everyone but the city of Ithaca has decided not to touch it. Just because it looks like the IRS is probably not going to really allow it. And even the city of Ithaca, hearing them talk about it, they may have kind of just said they're gonna allow it. They're not really understanding how it works, and that's kind of off our business to know. And I don't know if that's a great strategy, but that's their strategy, so. And... I think that's, that's about it. Our next meeting was on, we're gonna be talking more about cable and franchise agreements. And I'll be taking a harder look at things like the, uh, harmful, uh, looking for, seeing the way popular municipalities are probably might be able to help remedy that or just have to run on stuff like that. First, the chamber was just mostly a safe spot, which was, as well as, they wanted, they asked all the members to look to see if bike race impacted their businesses. So in the next meeting, we'll get to that. I'm guessing these, whether... I guess you need, whether, I hope that, unfortunately, but definitely take people on the front, so I'll inform them. Then, fire and et cetera.
Yes, et cetera, et cetera. All right, I'll start with these, however, it depends on what we're meeting. We had our first meeting last month, not too much was done, we just kind of meet and greet, didn't know everyone was there, or we kind of set up a vision that we have for that, the round, which we mentioned maybe before, so I'm more into it. I think there's also a piece on the website for that, which is more information there as well. At this point, we are, we received two RFPs for that work from outside of curb, so we're reviewing those as a committee and we'll be scheduling all of them next meeting, until it's the end of month. So that's, no one's going on there, not too much, but we're starting off a little bit public. On fire, there are a couple of conversations that Jason wanted to have. I put a doc in the drop box regarding a couple of his equipment that he had purchased, which he talked for, the first one was a cheese vehicle. He's looking at two options, there's a new Tahoe for, I don't know. For $36,000 plus adding on pieces that need lights and radio, it's just shy of $46,000. There's also a used Tahoe, 2015 Tahoe for $35,000, so only a thousand dollars less. But it also has some of the lights already installed, it's a cheaper car, so it'll bill us just shy of $40,000. He wanted us to have a conversation of which way we'd like him to go on that decision. In that document, I put in a bunch of numbers of what the, this price for a new Tahoe. And the, the used price for the, I don't hear it. But it looked to me like the new price was a really competitive price, so it's kind of leading in that direction, but I'm also very interested to know if we will have thoughts on this. Just to add to that, we have reserve just a little more than $34,000, so the idea is to buy one of these with that amount, borrowing the rest from the half price we usually have, and then paying that back once we sell off each current Tahoe. So that's a lot there, I'm only just wrapping my ear on it, but I asked, should we answer questions if we don't have any or hearing what I can explore of those? If I have any, I'd leave it on that.
Is there a recent study on the Tahoe? I mean, I know that's what we got news last time, but does that meet up?
No, no, it's not a question of that, yeah.
No. There's a price of using that type of vehicle. Maybe it's not.
Official truck, is that your issue?
Well, it's usually the official truck of Lansing and we can get it out, that's how I understand it, but.
Did they purchase that?
Sorry, so we did recently purchase a used one from Lansing, it was a 2008, but it used in 2016. Which is the, the, Jason would like to see it on a five-year placement schedule, that's another conversation we can have. So basically, keep it homemade, it's cost down.
What's the mileage on the 08?
I have not gotten that.
And you may have said that to me, I just don't remember.
I have not seen that, he said it was, he was getting a rating of $10,000, $15,000 for, for it to be sold off, but I don't know what that, what it is. So I think the set replacement cycle is important to come up with, how that relates to mileage is important, depending on what we find, whether it was, uh... So maybe its costs are certainly, we started going back to the 15,000 miles.
Yeah.
How much is the cost? How much is it?
I think the five years was pretty short, the placement scale, and I can't imagine that, that was just that high, but maybe a little bit.
Yeah. So why? Just trying to remember where it is on the button. Is that utility vehicle line? I don't know.
I'm sorry, the one?
I have a utility vehicle line for one.
Yeah.
And that's only the two truck?
Yes.
That's a $34,000, she said, Tom, the other pickup, that was the two truck.
Well, yes, it would be that. I mean, that was the cheese truck, and when they decided that was supposed to be the same with the...
Right, right. Well, I'm just trying to remember, I remember discussing this, I was like, we were going to switch that to the...
And it took these, it's, it's driving.
So then you want to go back?
As far as the mileage and anything else that you'd like to, Jason? Any clarification, I guess, on what budget line?
At this point?
My impression is remaining 21, I guess the question is, are we sure that the pickup truck is now on the apparatus line?
Yeah, let's see.
Not, we're both on that.
Say both on that and if we're $5,000, store it, do you have a kind of number, so?
By those, maybe you're second.
Yeah, so if we're putting both of those, I mean, that's...
Right, that doesn't work. That would never work, that, that would happen. All right, so I can ask?
I think we would need justification to find your placement cycle for buying new. Or... How long, how much, here, we've got, kind of, how much of our...
Just a clarification, it was used.
Why is it used, it's $6,000? You have to present this kind of...
All right, so I will give very young mileage and then some more clarity on the replacement cycle and that budget line, because I was, I was just, she's able to pick up all of that in the background.
There is a top one.
Yeah, that's, I think that's not bad.
A lot of... That's what these people are... There's always, there's shares permanent as scores. There are a lot of ideas.
Good. Then one of the other questions you might ask is, the Tahoe was originally equipped to be a car that could care to transport someone and provide, almost like a mini ambulance? I know that the research involved that out, so they didn't function that way. But again, depending on what needs we go in it, the effects inside is going to be, and if you're trying to cleanse, you're going to want to, you're going to do more information.
We do something along the same shores. Right. Yeah. Maybe, maybe that's not a... Oh. Big old shit, I guess.
That's okay.
There was also, I'll, I'll, officially, but just to get that heads up, Jason's also interested in all of the various, or pagers, I guess there was a, a deal, this one, the next, and it's very, very old. And so just looking to get, see more information on that, and what's happening with that in September. And then the last piece is an update on the clean energy initiative that Nancy was mentioning. So we're going to slightly different one for the village right now, which is a clean energy community for rent. We need to get four out of 10 high action actions for that. We have just recently received our third checkbox, there was a resolution passed during the last board session that they get notice of or they dropped somewhere online, and so I resubmitted that and that's been approved. So we're now looking for our last, final checkbox to check. There's pretty much two ways that that can go about happening. One, it is looking at, we're looking at replacing our streetlights for L E's and Keith is kind of taking a point on that. That can happen one of two ways, either we can buy back the streetlights and then we can replace them ourselves, or we could continue to have N I C A, maintain them, or just continue to work with N I C A, but we could pay down to switch over L E's. So we're looking to quote some of that work. And then Terry at Cooperative Extension is looking to, can help us run the numbers on that once they pay back on those, give us some kind of information on that.
I, I think the U S students, but Ithaca offered to, for small feet, so you might be able to replace the light holes, maybe be able to do a quick bit?
Right, I think they would help service that, probably, again, that might depend on, I mean, or if we hold them, if we purchase them back.
Right.
I think, so I was talking with, that we manage some of the streetlights on the experience areas, I think we might be able to handle that as well, so we'd like that to work, but...
Or, but if it was a TICAC initiative, it was really popular. Didn't we already ask last second, I imagine we did that several times?
Yeah, the process started along, it's sort of like that. To the one paper, they say they've still been waiting on the, they confidently have the examining insurance ready for us. We've sent that, they still say they don't have it, so we're sending it. I also have asked more, they're also trying to work the numbers for us on this other program, which is the streetlight diversion program, so we can compare costs essentially, do what makes more sense for us and, so we could essentially do proposals for them, and we can decide which one makes more sense.
And talking with, with Terry at Cooperative Extension, it sounds like that's, mostly programs pay back over time anyhow, so it's kind of an investment proceeding outside of the program, I think we might want to just do that stuff. The other piece will be showing a reduction of 10% air greenhouse gas emissions since 2014, 2015. I gave Terry's, our, our, our gas electric bills for the wastewater treatment plant over the past couple of years, and looked in that, and it looks like that might get us about halfway or a little more towards that goal, but we'd still fall short with just that project. And that was kind of our, our hope, that maybe just in that project, it helps us over 10%. So the next steps to try and go down that path are kind of two-fold. One is there's a program through N I C A, where they'll send out someone to do a review of covering indoor lighting and like external lighting of buildings over, and then also potentially cover up to 70% of that cost to switch over. So if that sounds like something we'd be interested, at least just getting the information on, I think we could go ahead and ask Tammy to kind of stay all rolling on that as well. So that's something I want to bring up here. The other part would be thinking about, as we're looking at the village hall boiler replacement, so took a tour with Tom and kind of looked around downstairs and saw what's going on. There's also a report from T A D A that they took a look at everything eight years ago or so, and their thought at the time is that not only was the, the boiler was kind of getting along at that point, but clearly it's old now, but the distribution system is also not great and it gets, you know, got some cockroaches, some old rooms, people are supplementing the electric heat in different places. So the thought there is that the, we replaced the boiler, it's not really going to get us all the way back, like to a grid system, we do have to deal with the kind of distribution as well. So with that all in mind, the thought is, would an air source heat pump system for the village hall make more sense, or the price look like for that? So to that, on that front, Cooperative Extension and T A D A are working together, hopefully this month, maybe next, to start a program that they would come in, do an energy audit for us, and will give us more information to get, either a quote from them or the information we need to get some quotes from L E's. So those are the kind of two prongs of what we can do to try and get that next 10%.
We are less than four months away from making heat in this company yet.
Yeah, so I, I'd love to know what the, what actually, what issues we've run into, or is it just that?
Oh, I was saying, that's the people, it don't work. And it's funny, because it'll be fine one day, they will come in the morning and it'll be, you know, 45 degrees.
And we've been, we've been keeping the can down the road for a couple of years now, so I'm, I'm all in favor of the energy audit and seeing what can be done in larger buildings, which might tie the concept about this building as a whole.
Right.
And whether we're still here in 10 years, kind of thing. But I think we need to get that boiler replaced or approve its replacement next month, in September.
Yeah.
So I know we're waiting on a couple of quotes and whatnot, but...
Well, we'll see if I can get a quote by then, if there's a, there's a chance that might happen, and then we can bring that to the table and have a discussion about that. And that's kind of the, where I've been aiming for at this point, so we'll see if we can make that happen. As far as getting quotes, someone through N I C A to come take a look at the lights and see what that would look like, any objections we have, Tammy, just go ahead with that. I think that's it for me.
Rand?
Oh, so Rand is under the business, so we'll talk about that.
Any more questions for the, for teaser?
Yeah.
Let me see, all right, stick her up for the radio call. I think we'll take a moment to pause there, I see Anne has settled in and has a list of things she wants to tell us all about, so we'll go back to our course from representatives, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, sorry to be late. We're on a whole lot on this today, one of the things is the airport renovations and expansion are coming along pretty quickly. The governor's pushing that step along pretty quickly, possibly to do, but this is an election year, I'm not sure, but, and so there'll be a series of like presentations or, you know, as we go along, go along, they know we're coming, you know, getting all kinds of back leads and things like that. But it, we are going to be sparing different services, I'm looking at that, like service to Chicago is already sparing, Charlotte is coming up soon, and DC, DC I think is starting to look forward, something like that. So that'll, part of the rationale is to get us into hubs outside of the Northeast so that it's not weather dependent. So, and we're also looking at getting shuttle, bus shuttle service to the airports down in New York City here in Jersey. So that, so like you can check in, your bags are checked, and then you're going down there, your bags, you just go right out and get a flight versus going and having to go down there. So that's something that we'll be able to. They're, it's from the public safety, but he said they were, there are no arrests at grassroots this year, the first time that anybody can remember, so that's, they were really happy about that. So usually in July, the population in jail also, and it didn't this year. So congratulations on whatever, people weren't doing, maybe because it didn't rain this one, I don't know, something, something was going right. Pardon me?
What they weren't doing.
They, well, I don't know, I heard things from inside, if things were going pretty good, so.
They all were like, like, much, much.
Yeah. Your county legislator might have gotten a ticket because the cops were so bored, because it had one little light out, and it was still during the grass, it was fun than that. They were paying attention or something. So, we've had some meetings, some folks in the community have been talking about our office of human rights, so there's some rumors out there that we're trying to dismantle the office of human rights, so we had a meeting, the Health and Human Services meeting today was a big meeting I had, which was quite misleading. was a big meeting I had, which was quite exciting, and a lot of people had spoke for almost two hours from the public, so they left a comment, and talked about a lot of different things. It was, there was a comment, the only thing we can trace it back to from our end is that one legislator made a comment one day, months ago, that he thought that that was an option to be looking at that, but it's not our intention as far as my, I'm seeing, and as far as all legislators I've talked, because we're not looking at dismantling the office of human, uh, human rights. That's enough?
Fuck, which is written.
I didn't have to pay the files, but.
All right, thanks.
Just reassuring you, at the local level, people are tired, you know, like the officials are kind of, well, that's good. Sorry.
All right, EMS and youth.
I don't actually have much, except obviously, uh, the session, as management, we have a meeting on 30 minutes, so that would be, I'm hoping, you know, we're moving towards something to bring to the board, it's just the action.
TB W R sewer, Deb.
Okay, put it in the drop box, it's the Camden of Report for the Month, it is 100% within specs, so nothing to worry about there. Interesting to note that we actually have to, we, we have to do an extra pressing and an extra order to have the pressings taken away when grassroots is in town. Just a little extra waste. You can go waste water, you can play. Okay, we are ready to close out these projects. I believe that we have one change order in here that is a $5,000 credit. It was for the, came in $5,000 under for the HVAC system. And it's a change order, we just have to accept it, I don't think we have to do anything necessarily. No, I didn't even know what was in there. It is in the drop box. So it is, I have to just like, if you need to sign it, Warren, I just want to do that, if you, Warren, the authority to sign it, I'd love you to have a credit.
So the motion in a second. Looks like, from King and King Mechanical, and this is on the well system as part of the H V A C contract, is we are getting a credit back of $5,000. So if there's no discussion, then all in favor of accepting this change order, please say aye. Aye, opposed, or stated.
Other than that, I was out, let's see, again, Dusty's out this week, so we're on next meeting, we'll just follow that. I, I think this is, you can sign on the Wednesday. Oh, sorry, save the second.
So I was, I have like a trickle in the back of my brain that when we switch to Camden, that the price is going to increase over time.
It is.
That's already happened?
Mm-hmm.
That was like the first couple of months.
That's all I can think of here.
All right. Yeah, I thought so, I thought it was fairly quick, but I couldn't.
It was, it was minimal, it was like, $200? Yeah, $200, I mean, it was less than a four flat.
Just trying to drop my.
Ready, go to questions for Deb. All right, next up is me.
The atheist completed God and Colin, other than that, Tammy's been out and it's done, still the water, all that sort of stuff, but I mean, the day terrible are. And that's, um, seems to be some questions. We're going to start losing that E F C coming late fall. Got our first property to work for that.
Where are, I would point to the site on project, I didn't, wasn't following that, but.
Um, we, we should be getting probably one more bill from that, and then it's down, and it should, then it should be completed.
Do you want to talk about that?
Yep. We have a contract from, who does our workers' comp? If I, I read through it, I mean, it's pretty easy, I assume you guys did, spent a drop off a while, and just need to request that Warren to sign it for our insurance.
It's an addendum to the workers' comp policy, has some language about the members of our, it's our safety official, which is technically our U B W supervisor, but everything else is fairly similar to what was in the previous agreement. Let's have a chat with Karen. I wouldn't agree with that, you know, I haven't studied the old creations, but I wouldn't. Questions about the permanent addendum? If not, then I would enter the motion to authorize me to sign the addendum with our workers' comp and liability insurance company. So, second. Motion in a second, do we need further discussion? We claim to, let's see if we can hear. Workers' comp? One?
Not, not, you can, you can.
One, one or two? Two, let's see if we're close. No, it's not speaking. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none and all in favor, please say aye. Now, our clerk is excused for her vacation time, although she has graciously agreed to come in tomorrow for Chief Nelson swearing in. Under my report, as many or most of you know, Rick Geiger has stepped down as our planning board chair, although he has agreed to remain on the planning board, he has some family obligations that preclude him from being able to continue to take on the amount of work that the chair has. With vacancies, it is up, it is up to me to appoint the new chair. However, I have spent some time discussing it with the other members of this board, who might be a good candidate. Had Rick resigned from the board, then we would have been faced with replacing his seat, but since he is remaining on, we simply need to pick from among the existing planning board members, a new chair. I've had discussions with a couple of the planning board members, and again, as I say, with this board, and we're in agreement. So it is going to be my decision that the effective immediately, the planning board chair will be Jessica Giles. Her role as chair begins today, and she will chair her first meeting at the end of the month. She will for the moment remain the chair of the Comp Plan and zoning revision committee, unless or until we decide that the combined workload is, is too much. As Ben mentioned, our first meeting was really kind of a, a meet and greet and vision, review of the vision of that particular committee. She, in my conversations with her, she's eager to do both, but we will evaluate as we, as we go along. The zoning, the Comp Plan and Zoning Revision Committee is an ad hoc committee of the sport, so we can move you on and off or around at will. So that was item number one. Two for me is, is that time of year for us to apply for our deer management permit from New York State D E C. Again, the drop box for the board to review, and this will be on the website in the agenda packet tomorrow, we have the deer management report from last year, and I'll just briefly go over it. So last year and every, so this, this coming September, September of 2018 would be the start of our fifth year with the Trumanburg Deer Management Program. Last year, year four, it ran from September of 17 until the end of March of 18. There were 13, I believe, 13 participants. Of those 13 participants, or out of those 13 participants, there were a total of 52 deer that were harvested, 19 males, 33 females. That number is up from the previous two years. The prior year, 16, 17, 31 deer were taken. 15, 16, 2015, 2016 season, if you want to call it that, only 27 deer were taken. The prior year, so 14, 15, was our first year with the program, some 92 deer were taken. So we saw a sharp drop off from 92 the first year, down to 27, up to 31, and then up to 52 last year. You'll see in the report, there's some additional statistics about distance to shoot, looks like a couple of deer were shot and lost. And so the basic program will remain the same, most of the sites are the same, the oversight committee members and the folks who'll be running it will be the same, Pat Miller from Larchmont, and of course, Merk Lawson from Cornell will continue to direct the program. There is a copy of the program itself, which has not changed at all other than the dates from last year, and all of this needs to be submitted along with the application to D E C. So unless there's any discussion or questions, certainly we can, we can talk about it, if you may, what you, what you have, if not, though, we do need a motion to authorize me to sign the deer damage permit application, instead of the D E C.
No, Luke. One reason why.
Deer damage?
Yes, that's what it's called, deer damage permit.
I mean, you can, that's our time, but.
I mean, definitely how it goes to end up, who may reach that, it depends on how you can. Sorry, motion on the table, do we have a second?
Second.
Yes.
Friendly amendment to that, if that's all right, is authorizing the signing of the application as well as the approval of the deer management program for 2018, 19. I'm just looking to see what we have. I don't think he has pounds. But I can ask.
What's your policy regarding any questions from the board during the panel?
Good question. Can you ask it, ask the.
It's, it's essentially up to the board. Take them or not.
I don't know, should you?
Oh, sorry, sure.
Have you heard anybody say that there aren't enough deer around versus everybody here? That there's way, way, way too many deer, they're chewing up everything. So I think the numbers are looking good, but they're not anywhere near what they need.
I've never had anybody tell me we need more deer.
I would yell hunters, but I have heard hunters say that they're scarce.
I have heard hunters complain that they have had bad seasons.
But I do believe that within the grounds of the village, there are way too many. Still.
Can you, can you suggest to them, they, unmore, is that, up to them, can you put a target of 300 deer or?
Certainly up to them, you know, it is a volunteer program, so I don't know that we can, we can drive them to hunt more. They are all handpicked individuals who are serious about their crafts of the wolf hunting, so I don't know that they need much encouragement. Two years ago, or was it three, I forget which year, it was very, very cold for an extended period of time, so they, there was some drop off in participation. Last year was, was much better.
Just for an idea of the participants, how much time, I mean, it's 50 some deer, and what was the average, like eight hours spent in a stand for, per deer? So it's, I mean, it's a, it's a huge amount of time, that's, that's what it is, I don't...
December of 17, it was a total of 92 hours spent in various program sites, that was the highest one.
So remember at one point a while back, there was an ask for more locations from people who own the land, if they want to open it up and be participating at a stand there, so anyone's, you know, interested in helping out the program, that might be a, a way to do that. There are restrictions from public buildings, you have to be in so and so forth, but fresh new locations tend to be more productive, isn't my understanding.
I believe we are assigned, a red wire is assigned in that city. I was hoping we wouldn't have any deer problem, so we shared in.
I think the best estimates, and I don't know how, how we can be very accurate about this, but the best estimates are somewhere between 75 and 100 deer remain within the village limits at any time. And I'm certainly no expert on this, but those who are, those who are stated, we should have anywhere between 8, 12 per square mile, so we're a little over that. Village being 1.2 square miles, it's a pretty easy area to determine how many we should have. So we have a motion in a second, an additional board discussion. Sir, it's active, the version, this is just, the version, step forward. There isn't, it's more and it's less that they've stepped forward and more that they've been asked.
Oh.
Has to do with the, the desire for, for prowess.
Definitely, I'm sure, that's, that's really the biggest factor.
Participants means sites or hunters?
Hunters, hunter. Technically not hunting, because we don't have deer hunting in the village, I should say, legally not.
Parks and markets.
It's full of beauty.
Damage.
Just, yeah, yeah. Deer nuisance management. They're, they're deer damage mitigation personnel. All right, so if there's no more discussion on that, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any extensions?
Can you have to, with the chairman, that says you are on that, doesn't need to be bothered.
Anyway, that's what I'm thinking. The last item for me is for the board to consider forming another ad hoc committee, just one, actually a reliable of the street treatment, which existed, I want to say from mid 1990s, so 95, 96, all the way through the early part of the 2000s. That particular committee, and I have the spreadsheet, all the way to me. Do that for me, Rob? Did that come to you, Rob? I don't think so. I'll email it to you all. They essentially, that committee walked the village over the course of a couple of years and identified individual trees, particularly trees in the right of way, street trees, those kinds of things, and evaluated that, healthy, not healthy, property owner's responsibility, license responsibility, village's responsibility, and so forth. And produced all of this information that just stopped. I would like to, if you're interested, I would like to reform that committee with Ben on it, working closely with Karen Powers, to review all of that now, probably almost twenty-year-old information, and take a good look at what trees, if any, need some immediate attention.
So what's your chance of the village be responsible for trees other than obviously their, like, this property or village-owned properties? Because as I understand it, our right of way, we don't manage at all, especially trees. That's right.
I think that would be something for the committee to make a recommendation. If there are, if there are trees which pose a hazard to public safety in the village right of way, then how do we address that? Do we go to the property owner and say, please take care of this tree, it's your property by our right of way? And if it falls on a car or an individual, then that's not a good thing. I don't, I don't have any strong meanings on where or that about how to proceed with that, I just think we should.
I'd rather we never intervene unless we had a need to dig it up for some purpose, whether it was paving or gas lines or whatever.
And we might find, it's one of those issues like sidewalks, if you really force people to shovel their sidewalks or not.
I mean, the difficulty, you know, there's, just driving around, there's a lot of trees, there's a lot of trees that are very dangerous. There's a lot of trees, and they're very dangerous that are in the building right of way. I think we've sort of skated by historically, because I say, it's not a very sort of generous, it's been very helpful in a lot of ways, but yeah, I think that's very good.
Yeah, I think it's something that we need to...
So are you evaluating the trees just in the right way or are you evaluating the trees in front of the property? I mean, I have, I have four trees in front of my house, one of them I know has to be shipped, and it's not right of way. I'm thinking as to ship.
Yeah, I would leave it to the committee to determine how to make that recommendation. I don't know that we want to get into telling the property owner. We could inform them.
Couple of them.
We could inform them that that tree standing right there is going to land in your house and get a strong wind, and I don't know that we want to get into trying to.
Yeah.
It is, it's already dead, and it's very difficult to manage. The line of liability is very sketchy, so if we start saying that that is true, and the sort of implication is that we look over everything, I don't think we want to be sending the village personnel on people's private property, you know, I'd rather just keep the right of way and have that be a very reasonable.
So if you're up for it?
Yeah.
I've already spoken with Karen about it, she's interested, but she's kind of, she's certainly not a tree expert, but taking care of the teamwork that has grown, they're willing to start making it larger things.
Don, it's my, I started with Robert, I'm a building board, I don't know where he got that.
Yeah, they, you know, the town's conservation advisory committee has both Don Ellis and Andy Hillman, who's, you know, and he, they submitted a grant last year trying to get money to do a trade inventory throughout the town, I think. And they didn't get, I think they were trying to tweak that to reapply.
I think they're all too, yeah.
Yeah, Don certainly was involved, and Andy Hillman would be sort of, you know, a resource whether he would serve on the committee, but Andy's the guy that you know, he's helped grants for trees along, for trees and whatnot.
All right, so I'll put you two in catch-up.
Yeah.
Let's remember. I will forward the inventory spreadsheet, we'll see. Right, item number seven is acknowledgement of correspondence, which I don't believe you received any correspondence to the board. Old business, that actually covered it, we complained, it's on revision update. That committee is in the process of reviewing the areas that were submitted and discussing how to proceed. Village hall water replacement, I believe we will table this in September if we can sign it.
Yeah, we want to have it up before it's closed.
I'd like to hold it at a, if it's, if it's on, it's going to be really cool.
I'll bring my books. Thanks.
Item number nine, new business, village hall ramp repair.
So I took a walk around the ramp with Tom and my father and got a sense of what needs to be replaced and looked at there. It looks like the structure, this pre-saddle, the flooring, the decking is really the problem. So in the Dropbox, there is a quote for just shy of two thousand dollars for crew, like, snapped together decking. That was a recommendation from my father. It's something that we used previously in similar situations and holds up really well and has a good tread to it. And that would be enough to cover the deck, and we'd have to find the time, is the one to put, get people together to actually put that together, to make that happen.
So that's the ramp going up and taking you right?
Yeah.
And stopping at the landing level?
No, it would go all the way up, yeah. All the way up to the, to the actual porch is the idea. And then I think he said they may have missed some screws or something on there, so it might be a little bit more than this actually total, but more about on the bucks or something. So that's, that's where we've gotten to, but I didn't know actually at this point if we need multiple quotes or if we need to kind of, whatever, like, go with this, because this is just kind of where we got to, like, I think, last week.
We've tried to get multiple quotes and Dusty can't get them.
Okay.
I think there's a difference between getting multiple contractors to call and multiple resources where you've got a lot, you go over and get one, or not.
This is just for materials.
Oh, I don't, this is a materials quote, it's not a service quote.
Right, yeah.
So do we need multiples, materials quotes? And I would ask why we need to check one more first.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm assuming this is some of my, my ad hoc book producer, but I would be absolutely, it's still written on the carry, but you like, it could be that.
Just low, who's there, and how do you, because if you're...
Low's might, because I was just trying to look up what this was again, because actually we only need a lot of ones, and it looked like Low's might have it.
What is it?
If it is what I, if it is what I spelled on Low's, it's kind of this composite deck board, it's kind of groomed, it looks like it kind of snaps together a little bit, there's a little bit of passage.
So it's like, oh, yes, I forgot that.
Yeah, so I presume that's what it is, because he talked about something that was in the, in the, like, hardware that's on there. I think that's whatever they need to put this particular thing together.
I don't know, I'm trying to be sure.
There's, separate screws.
Counter security.
Yeah. Did Dusty also ask you, Chief Nelson, can we officially talk to him?
Yeah. Hundred seventy-five screws per box.
Chief Nelson would also like the steps in front of the PD department, taking care of, did I get it too? Yes.
I mean, if this matters.
Right. This is what you're talking about, right? Those are the trucks.
I think that's what I was, yeah. That's what I was finding about it, so.
How often is this been repaired?
About every six weeks, six, eight weeks, especially the, the flat part, the turnaround. It's been, it's been, it's marked and comes up, and it has to be re-screwn.
It sounds like it's been replaced every...
It has been replaced in the six, seven years, I don't care. Couple boards here and there, but not one.
It does seem like part of the issue is that it's, if the heavy traffic, it's got a lot of salt in the winter, it just kind of gets torn apart.
So is the root, root, yes.
Right, sort of a bit.
And you can try and crop off that one again.
So we can either price shop, try to save a few dollars, or we can authorize the expenditure up to a dollar a mil, and authorize Ben to take the delivery and organize the chain gang, the work party.
Okay. Are we going to do this from budget line or are we going to do this from a, the office?
The building's a terrible...
We do. Do I apologize for that? Whatever the conversation goes, might be excited.
So I think we should authorize the expenditure up to like, it has an obligation, if we're going to say, because this is another issue that should be done, which is all over again, you know, the way these things drag out, if we can do it right now, we should do it right
I agree.
Will it require another inspection to see how much tech you have at least, or what?
I don't know.
They have a line that can support that.
Yeah, that's the question, is do we want to add, you know, whatever, an extra, for five boards or something to get that done, if they want to move it to the price then?
It's hard to guess, it's, um, eighteen fifteen.
Twenty-two hundred, that's, for twenty-two hundred. That'll cover the steps for two thousand dollars, two thousand dollars. Yep. But, yes, I would do it for a while. Yeah.
Okay, so someone will have to make a motion to spend up to, do you think, twenty-two hundred?
Yeah, I think that we are, up to twenty-three hundred dollars for materials for replacement, decking, and stairs, and village hall, and police departments.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
An additional discussion. Hearing none, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, extensions, all abstained. I don't know, that's just like, I don't have a opinion to do it, so. Your is up to you.
I'll just, yeah, I'll abstain.
This is the worst, but you could do it.
I think this is the worst one.
Well, but he's not important.
He's all, he's all...
He's all, that's true.
Nobody's like, I want to vote for this.
So I'd be able to tell how many people, will we acquire, is there a maximum for a minimum?
I don't know that, that'll probably get out.
Check out how many people we need, and we'll try to have some dates.
All right.
Four people would be great, if you can step up and check. I have forty show up.
That's a matter.
Any other new business? All right, and we got some bills to pay.
That's including me.
Yes.
It's your turn.
Okay, ready to pull it up in the Dropbox? So we have a general fund abstract totaling one hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and sixteen cents.
That is not one of those abstracts. That was just a, just a more funded, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, one twenty-eight oh two. Should I have?
Please, what else?
I have the mail, I want to be open. I'm trying, I'm trying to do that now.
All right, so we have a general fund abstract totaling one hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars and two cents.
I move that we pay one hundred eighty-seven thousand, one twenty-eight oh two for the general fund.
Motion, a second, any discussion? The difference between what I have in my hand and what's there is the farmer's market manager, the monthly stipend is in the Dropbox, but not on the sheet front.
Is this the one with the fifty thousand?
I don't have a question, but... There are no questions, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, extensions. Next is the EMS billing abstract, paying medics for their services in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Who would prepare that in a billing abstract?
I'm sure there's a second, any discussion? These just not run out?
Are you talking about the towns?
Yeah.
Brian and I are in the process of trying to balance them.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, extensions. The water fund abstract, in the amount of seventy-three thousand, twenty-eight dollars and three cents.
We would pay seven-three thousand, twenty-eight dollars and three cents for the water fund.
Second. So this is the one that supply distribution bond?
Yeah, this is the interest, change of, for the C thousand, two thousand. My name is, it's, 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 actually. The, it's one of the water repair bonds.
Water repair?
Well, from, it's an older bond, the water tank one, probably, right? I can tell you just the time.
Should we pay them in fifty thousand dollars, almost before, and I just?
Yep.
Right.
And it's for the water supply and distribution system. This is the next, the last payment I'm ever.
So this was, you mean, right? This is the water, maybe?
Was it? No, 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 it wasn't the water, that was the, yeah. It was the, wasn't this the thing? It wasn't, it wasn't the one we did, I mean, for what it's doing, but I came with two thousand dollars, much.
Right.
Yes.
This is two thousand nine, this is actually came on the main street, right?
Okay, okay.
This is the one that replaced it down there.
Okay, yep. And it's the next one, the last one, where they was? We might have, I'll look.
You have a motion and a second, on the water fund abstract, any other questions? Hearing none, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, extensions. Flashbulbs. We have sewer fund abstract in the amount of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety cents.
We should play this. I move that we pay three thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety cents for the sewer line.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, extensions. Close, abstentions. Capital improvement water well, second water source project in, this is for the backup generator, amount of one thousand seven hundred and one dollars.
I'm going to pay one thousand seven hundred and one dollars for the water capital improvement.
Second. Motion, a second. Any discussion?
Is that going to stay?
Yeah, it is here. It's a port of the town, I don't know. It's not Indian.
All right, but it is going to live.
It is going to live here.
Yes.
That's it.
Hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstentions. And last but not least, we have our trust and agency abstract in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Who would pay that trust and agency?
Second. Motion, a second, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstentions.
Yep, you want to start?
All right. Our second public comment period privilege of the floor is open. This man.
Um, I'm increasingly struggling to figure out where the cross is, way too safely, again, I mean, all of this. And I just wanted to re-bring out, bring out, I'm sure we've talked about it before, some kind of like a fisheye here on the corner, on the, the sewage tree on that side, so you can see what's coming downhill here, walking uphill and back there. That's it. And also, when, when can we meet the.
He was here briefly earlier, we're having a ceremonial smirking tomorrow morning at ten AM.
Okay.
Right here in this room.
Okay.
You're welcome to.
I'm sorry, I was.
Here. Uh, we are looking at the revisiting, we're at the stop sign above that hill, coming down from Dean Street, but it's not going to slow traffic coming down from Cuba. But depending on how it's installed, maybe, I don't know, fisheye can work exactly there, but.
Like a couple of those mirrors that just surround you, right? That's, that's what people would say, hey, right there.
One of the things is, um, stop signs are part of our vehicle and traffic, the village's vehicle and traffic law. So we have to amend the local law to change stop sign placement for the tour. Okay, but doing, given a good look through, for his opinion on any of those.
Does the village own that property that's right up against the kind of intersection there from the sewer side? Could there be added? Because I feel like when you're backing off, this one's driving, something like that, it's very concrete and you're kind of.
I could leave so.
Possible. It's kind of, so I've thought about this a little bit too, to this stuff, so where's your intersection in the world? And it's tricky because in order to make that work, you have to have a very large mirror to see it from a distance. I mean, it's not like you're backing out or you're even fairly. I mean, you could probably do it so that you see around the corner without like blindly oncoming traffic with the mirror. But that's always been my concern, is that people driving at the mirror would have their lights reflected back in it.
Yeah.
But maybe if it's at a steep enough angle, it works.
I just found that like, my issue personally is just coming down the sidewalk and trying to figure out where, where to cross so that I don't get squished by cars moving around my corner. And then also not get squished by cars coming downhill on the side where there's the, what's it called? The lane or whatever it is that catches the water. So it's, you know, it's always an issue, I know, but.
The stop sign might be a flaw, it just didn't block one way of traffic, otherwise you got fewer pieces in a.
But if she's, if she's walking down her property trying to cross the street, she can't because those people are walking down and then up. And that's on her side that she can't see. If there's a fishbowl, at least she could look down on top of that stop sign, at least she could glance at that, get some idea of that if people were coming. India didn't refer to me as a night owl, do you?
I think not.
I mean, I bet you could make it work, it's just.
Can I speak to that question also? We've had, uh, there's, we've heard of some of the external people over the weekend. We don't have all the information yet, but part of that is that there were, people were concerned about is coming over with a line down, that she possibly couldn't see that and they couldn't see her, so they were right across. So visibility is a huge issue if you can't actually see. And I was just driving back and forth to Newfield, a lot of different windy roads and up those hills. I'm thinking the whole time, I'm like, you know, I'm slowing down, I keep slowing down, I'm like, but still going around all these streets, there's somebody. And then it was raining, I was like, there's no way I can stop.
If there's any like county resource going, look at, and there's actually like a engineering or something, I mean, another which was, I don't know. Other than, other than us just kind of guessing, right? I don't know. Anyone who worked in it like that.
My strategy right now is just to hold my breath so I can hear everything and like stand for a second and then just like go like out.
Would you put that with hybrid, on an electric car coming, can't hear most of it.
Well, she hadn't thought for that long.
So then you're stuck in your head.
We could look at that and then also going to change the shape of the road and it's really up. There has to be law enforcement issue.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and it wasn't to, to change the road, but just maybe there are things like mirrors or other kind of help hole. I don't know. I don't know if that would be the stuff.
Well, I have the chief Nelson's on board, yeah. Had to.
I can check the county.
Yeah, if there's any kind of, yeah, I don't know.
Is that a problem up there or just?
Yeah.
Just kind of. So I found out for that, versus the county with the town has to apply to, the state regulates the speed on a county road, so county and the town have to apply together to ask the state to do a speed study.
And then it'll be six months after they do the study, if you're lucky.
But I can see if we have any resources for looking at that.
Yeah, they're looking at. We've got ways to put stops.
We ever did the base notes. Of our, um, stoplight resists.
We have an older one, I remember, and we're. We have one from. Definitely. Is it our community five? We did? Maybe seven thirty?
I thought we could look after, we had, we had some kind of meeting, what was our, say the village, the people that all we needed this. And we asked DOT to do the study, um, there at Union Street and at Lake. I don't think, I don't remember getting the results of those studies.
I remember the one at Union supposedly, and I don't know which study this was revealed, but they had to wait an average of thirty seconds to get out from Union State or Aurora Left, and basically said, if it's not four hundred, that we're not interested in the light, you can pay for it yourself.
Right.
Oh, you meant your hand up first. I've, I've got a couple remarks, I guess. You were talking about fire equipment, and I'm, I went here from Portland, Vermont, and I'm far, I was far ahead, farther there. I'm amazed at the size of the equipment we have here. It just blows me away. I'm kind of investigating numbers, cost, budget, and that sort of thing, but these trucks are huge. And that seems to be in New York where that facility dealership. I'm just amazed at those trucks. Because typically, in Vermont, we have a lake, and we have to have, you know, the trees and stuff moved and trimmed so we can access. There's poor access here in some of those roads, I don't drive a fire truck now, especially a huge one. So I'm, I'm just commenting at this point, but it seems to me there might be three categories of vehicles. The huge jumbo style, which is what we've got. The giant big style, which is what in Vermont we dreamed about, and then regular economic size, which is what we have. Uh, I was in a town of seven hundred people. I read on backyard that there are about four, fourteen hundred ninety-six or some people, insurance firm, is that right?
And closer to eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred, seventeen ninety-one, I think, are the last instances.
So it's three times larger than the Vermont town that I came from. And the town they showed us was five thousand, and they had six trucks, none of them were big. So we, we have, we're in monster vehicles here. And I also, um, and I see the, you know, the, um, vehicles from fire departments around. I guess it's the same, have a very big sheep's vehicle. But I sometimes wonder, well, what, you know how to boat? Now, I like to hit a boat that, you know, because you can't buy a fire, take the boat which had the pump on, as you said. I don't know if that's being considered, you know, valuable or whatever. And, and what about a car instead of a truck? In Vermont, she used to go around and take people to the malls, things like that, so. If we, we needed a bus, we would have a pickup truck. So I wonder if cars would be considered. So those are just some, some clips, I guess. Uh, I would like the chief of mine to know that I've said this stuff, but. It, it just shocks me to see, um, you know, it's like, you know, it didn't have maintenance and stuff. I couldn't believe that the truck we just bought, you know, to, you have to tip the cat forward to get in underneath it. The dipstick can't see, so they left the cat up. Well, it couldn't get the cat down, this has to be perfectly flat to activate that downbar. For me, I mean, that's, I would have thrown that truck out just from that, I, I don't understand that. Might wonder putting in that fire truck, it's way above, I don't know this about, but I know how various other towns and communities. Boy, we could see that deep, deep, deep pockets available, I guess. I'm surprised. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And then I would have the follow-up question, so I don't know. But based on what you've said, is that because we have steeper New York state requirements, which seems to be an overwhelming thing, let me see here, it's our, our New York state requirements end up, end up putting us where we are most of the time. I don't know if any, one has their answer.
Yeah, that would be a question for, for the chief. I don't think that's the case. We're, we're required to provide basically what? The equipment that keeps them safe. I think it's the average legal charging, but necessary and whatever the sound like is. Common, but so I don't, you know, I think it's being a lot right to your back, like the ladder truck isn't necessary.
Unless you are fighting a fourth floor fire and there's ice on the roof.
Dumping water.
Right.
But everything looks nice, you know, it's not.
Any other public comment?
Uh, a little bit more of a question, so I get the sales tax summaries quarter of a month. Do you guys get them also, you know, for the county and the municipalities? Do you want me to save those and report to you then?
We don't get, we don't get any of these for hours.
Okay. Do you want me to tell you like the percentages as I get them, or is that, that's not something valuable to you then?
And countywide, I don't know if we're necessarily interested in each individual municipality, but county might be interesting.
The, the, the figures that I get are for the county and then what the municipalities get within the county, so it's two, two figures.
Well, we get the village's numbers, so I think county, countywide.
It's, it's the same, town or village.
Right, I'm saying we already get the village's numbers, but we don't get the countywide numbers.
So do you want me to tell you the counties?
Countywide, maybe, sure.
Yeah, that's, okay, so I'll tell you the counties. For the second quarter, the sales tax revenue was up ten point, I'm sorry, that was for Jim. Ten point two eight percent was up. For the second quarter is up eight point nine five percent. So it's continued to go up, and for overall for the year, it's up six point zero six percent. So it was looking good for that.
What's, what's up by the year?
Six.
Six point zero six.
Don't you need anything?
Well, we've been asking that, like, why, why am I, so finally they did some research, so I actually have that. Jesus, I guess. The, they think it, they're trying to trace it back, and there's a lot more people driving because the economy is better and also because it's not well enough that people are taking, it's still flights, but people are truly local tourists travel and people are coming into this area for tourism, so a lot is on the sales tax for the gas. And inflation is up a little bit, but it's not up too much, so prices are up, but not too much to discourage people from, uh, spending and consumer confidence is also up. And unfortunately, also consumer credit is up, but I guess when people.
Your company.
Right. People spend more under their credit cards and stuff, that's good for sales tax. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I said, especially when they do in kitchen renovations.
Wait till I find out, to do renovation. To live to be.
So they want those, I guess, every time.
Okay. Because about, should be, two or three years ago, Jim Dennis came in and told us that it was like down twenty percent, wasn't it?
Yeah, it can go down, yeah. Especially two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
But we use that in our budget. Okay, that's a, you know, that's a substantial part of our budget, is what we get in the sales tax, so it is good to know. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment, here, public comment? Anyone? All right. Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to hold the executive session to discuss EMS personnel, police personnel, and negotiations pursuant to Taylor Austin. So. Second. Motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstentions. All right, we are in session, thank everyone for being here.
Shut up. Can you talk to me, or, sorry, I didn't.
Kitchen. Yeah. We have some fireworks.